At 6:30 and we'll call it for order, the Van Alstine zoning board of adjustment. And we have indication powered by pledges will join me in this. Father, my Father, we come to you tonight to seek your wisdom. We ask for blessing on this town, all of our community, all of those who are suffering the bonus order. We ask them to bring, I ask you to bring them back to health and those who are, they may once again be a full and complete lives and participate with their local ones as they need to. We ask for a blessing on our meeting tonight and ask that you give us the wisdom to make the decisive decisions that would please you in Jesus' name and prayer.
Amen. Now the pledge, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to be Texas. One state under God, one and invisible.
If someone's outside the window with a little, I don't know if they're looking to get in or expecting this, they may be just walking up and down that sidewalk. Okay, we have a public hearing for the zoning board adjustment. I look forward to the agenda is conducted, a public hearing regarding a request by the owner of the agent for a variance to the Van Alstine code of accordance, chapter forty-six, article two, division to section forty-six, page ninety-seven, accessory building regulations, subparagraph C signed, our request is to reduce the required eight foot center for an accessory structure to three feet and subparagraph E reworded to reduce the required This is a council meeting and we can have it in our packet so you can get the video right.
Would you care if you were to show me?
Yeah. Little language survey and you can see the sketch here, eight by four of accessory building that they want in the portion of the fence.
Sort of damage.
We call it our, our leaders over in Sanford Park. That would be new development in home.
Sanford Park does, yes.
They got it on the way, right?
I'm not sure if they did.
I think maybe they're back to that for the agenda.
It wouldn't serve as a legal impediment to the, to the board.
So if the, the board approves it, then the zoning or the zoning change will take place, but they could still be in violation of their HOA terms. That would be between them and state to let.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, but people that come with this type of request that have an anxiety with our, our individuals or actually first. And get ordered at that.
Yeah, I guess, I can take a leak, so we're gonna have to have a meeting with these guys.
There's really, there's probably a lot that you might need to do. Definitely a few bad, broken, we're gonna do it. There's something to be a free draft, okay, we're gonna do it with that. Reasons for union variance and five feet. Okay, it's five feet and fifteen.
I don't know if they can hear me or not, but is there a reason that they can't follow the city ordinance? Like, does something make their property unable to do that, or is it just because they want to?
We can hear you.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
That's what I was asking, like why?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like if they had another five and eight foot, it's only two feet and five feet, but I don't know, it's very hard to tell from drawings, there's a water running, like a drainage issue or anything like that.
Right, that's what I was kind of wondering, what makes their yard unable to follow our ordinance?
Can somebody apply for something like this? And I mean, you know, we're gonna ask this question, is there anybody guiding them, like do a plan for something, hey, you want to go or something, and help them out, things like these are all pretty vague, they come across, they're not even a family.
We would normally have their application in the packet. So that should have some deep thing, or supposed to provide an explanation of the hardship on the application. I don't have the application to be able to give you that information, is they, we're working with the interim planner.
Would we be able to table this until we get the information?
That would be an option to table. And if I recall, the application does kind of lead them through each of the points, the consideration, particularly the hardship and the unique factors of the property that makes the, that their argument makes the very top.
But they were, they were not given that information to view the fiber.
They, I know, I know they did submit the application that asked for that information. I just don't have possession of it to share.
Did Van Alstine adjustment have it?
It only goes to this body, it doesn't have to go to ENZ.
And the requister is not present?
No, not online.
Okay, I can hear you, Jennifer, and I can hear our attorney, but I'm having a hard time hearing the rest of the council, so if I ask repeat questions, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, part of us, we use a reason to do not, I mean, it's bad, I don't object to them. They've asked for variance outside of the ordinance, I mean, what's, what's the reason to object to it?
Well, total variance is like that, request a hardship, like a reason why they're going to be putting it to the fence or putting it in, you know, a place that would require variance, and that's what we're trying to figure out, is there is it hard to like a smoke or a drainage or, you know, that won't be visible from the road?
That's true, we can go, you know, just on this one, we didn't have that favor. They didn't mention anything about the four away that they didn't recycle the code or whatever in there as well, and this could only be everything.
A, a new planner probably, but just follows a, a new routine. I would, I would recommend that you table this and we'll provide you with additional information. I don't see urgency here to approve this or deny it. It's a shed. My recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's just that we've done it this way for, I'm a head boy five weeks now, or four or five weeks, and over the last three months, we've always requested and asked for the same thing. And to say, we're not gonna do that now and to prove it, that's, that would be out of line of what we've done. So I'm, I'm with the, we gotta get a table.
Yeah, with the record, I guess we, we're supposed to, we asked, part of two.
Yeah, we get that information after the week. Do we make motion table or do we just table?
You can make a motion and it can be voted on to the, to the record of the majority of the council.
Mr. Mayor, has moved to table the request and file on its committee. Is that it?
I'll second it.
Mr. Collins, to second it. I'm sure the discussion on the motion to the House from accident, you know, especially it's going to vote in favor of table, please say aye.
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 May one abstaining or voting nay. Very nine hundred and fifty-five to zero. And we are at Island State, which is the government of the zoning board adjustment. We completed all the amendments on the agenda that were included in the grant by affirmation. And at this time, we will call. To confirm. After your objection, we will move on to the state council meeting. Now we're calling the state council meeting to order at six forty-three. And we'll be divided into two or one of the citizen communication. Is there anyone on our zoning communication who is indicated by the board's statement?
No, sir.
This call is indicated in negative, so we will leave to either agree. The items below are for executive session. Pursuant to the following designated sections of Texas government code, annotated subject point one, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following matters. Texas government code point five one zero seven four personnel views regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation or duties of the corporate officer or employee, in this case, the city manager. And that is our only amendment for executive session tonight. At six forty-three, we will go into executive session. And we'll get back in the local session with the conclusion of that is any decisions. Council will move ourselves back to the company. Council will move ourselves back to the company.
Can you hear us, Katrina?
I hear you. I couldn't tell what Marla was saying.
I just think it's gonna be the nature of this room.
I think you might be right. I can hear Ryan pretty well, but...
We'll...
Past Ryan, it's kinda muffled.
Okay, I make it 7:16 PM. We have come out of our regular session and the closed session was adjourned at 7:16. And we are back into open session. Item four in our agenda is considering taking action necessary regarding executive session.
I make a motion to approve the... We just called a new contract, a renewed contract for the city manager?
Um, the, I guess the draft, or the proposed city manager employment agreement with an effective date of March 1st, 2021 for a two-year term.
Agreed.
So we have a motion to approve the draft contract for the city manager for a two-year term. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
An emotion and a second for the draft contract? Is there any further discussion on the draft contract? Hearing none, it's time to vote. All in favor of approving the draft contract for a two-year term for the city manager? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That motion carries unanimously, five votes to zero. Thank you very much, Lainey. We really appreciate all the efforts you've done.
Thank you.
And look forward to continuing to work with you over the next couple of years.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Items five through 12. And they told me I'm required to read these. So, our consent agenda tonight is approval of minutes from the November 10, 2020, regular city council meeting. Approval, item six, approval of the 2020 certified X value, X level values. Item seven, approval of coordinates in the city of Vanossene's co-ordinances, section 2-183, having a library credit card convenience fee. Item eight, appoint De'ol Malam to fill the unexpired term of Jordan Kelly, running in Zerren condition, alternate place fee. Item nine, order the May 1st, 2021, general and special election. Item 10, approval of an amendment to the existing chapter 3A economic development performance agreement, excuse me, between L and E Properties, LLC, United Ag and Turf, LLC, and the city of Vanossene, Texas. Item 11, ask you for the resolution, offer resident mayor to sign an intralocal arena for the sale of 15,546,000 gallons of minimum take or pay water capacity in the amount of $27,538 in components to the city of Ananat, Texas. Item 12, passage of a resolution setting a public hearing for February 1st, 2021, at Sixth and Uptina, at Vanossene City Hall, for the proposed annexation of a tract of land within extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, the city of Vanossene, Grayson County, Texas. And the strategy follows being approximately 30... 32.4 acre tract of land situated in the James McKinnon survey abstract number 77 and the Charles A. Fox survey abstract number 413, Grayson County, Texas, and generally located on the north side of East FM 121, that's East Sherwin Street, and approximately 900 feet east of North McKinney Park Road and the right-of-way adjacent to this property, otherwise known as the 4A tract annexation. 34.24.
Episode.
It's the actual acreage
Get paid off now?
Of Miami-C, requested by the annex by the property, and a voluntary annexation. Those are the items for the consent agenda. Would any council person like to remove anything from the consent agenda for additional discussion?
No, no, just discussion, I would just like more information about number 10.
Information on 10. Amendment, approval of a new existing 380. You have specific questions or just want to make up?
I'd like to know what, why?
Um... The city was approached by United Ag and Turf and they had requested that if they were to bring their corporate offices to Vanossene out of McKinney, provide a training facility on-site, would the city consider extending the current 380 agreement by two years? That adds, I believe it was nine well-paid positions to the area. It brings additional property tax to that particular facility. So we amended the 380 agreement to allow that to take place.
If I'm not mistaken, that was discussed when they first approached us about moving here?
That was a possible decision to be made.
Especially if that was a whole discussion, they were closing the key, everything come to be very stark, so...
I'm sorry?
There were whole discussions when they first came to us and all this was being worked out, that they were coming, closing McKinney, closing Sherman, everything was going to be in Vanossene.
Their corporate office isn't at their retail store. In McKinney, this is corporate functions that are moving here for their 30-store chain. So all their administrative duties will move here. There'll be a central call center. So anybody needing service through any of those 30 franchises will call to this facility to order that online shopping. For John Deere, for their 30-store franchise, will go through this new center. That was not part of the original...
No, what you just said makes sense. Nine is a quarter of the center.
Yeah.
Does the online shopping come with warehouse?
Come with what?
Warehouse?
No, it does not. It's all drop ship.
Okay, any other questions who are concerned about the consent agenda? Hearing none, it's time to vote on the consent agenda. Anyone would like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as is.
Mr. Thomas has made a motion to approve consent agenda as is written. If you need a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? That motion carries unanimously, five versus zero. We're back to our regular agenda and item 13. Passage of a resolution continuing resolution number 11, S2020, S11, and mayoral declaration of a local state of disaster due to a public health emergency in response to the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Any comments or discussion on the resolution, continuing resolution?
May I get out front of this with Ms. Butler before?
Oh, I'm not...
Okay, well, I'll still get a little bit out front. It's needed for us to be reimbursed for CARES Act. I believe it's, what, $256,000? We have submitted all the necessary documents. They have now affirmed, confirmed that they've received it. They've been reviewed. We should anticipate payment in the next two weeks. So we're hoping we can bring this to a close.
The Congress just extended the CARES Act. The date by which the state and local governments can make their expenditures with the CARES Act funds was, the deadline was originally December 30th, 2020, and has it December 27th of last year. That has been extended out through this year. So the CARES Act went a little longer than the, the spending eligibility went a little longer than we originally anticipated.
I got a question about that. Because I'm sure the checks and balances from what the money you receive is then, and is it spent on COVID-related issues for PD or employees or whatever it might be? Any unused funds, does it return back to the state of Texas?
I believe that's correct. The state of Texas as the agent and then probably back to the federal government at some point. We will not be returning any funds.
No, I get it, but that's from the chairman.
So with the extension, does that mean they didn't spend when they paid?
That, I'm not, I'm not sure that that has any effect on the, the payment. If it's already just been dispersed in this year's budget, I wouldn't expect anything to change, but I'm not sure.
I don't think I have that.
I have one more question about that. Based on just Vanossene alone, are PD stuff for frontline workers or R workers, I'm assuming 260,000 as well, like is a pretty high number of what we actually needed over this time? Or is that right online? Is it, I guess what I'm trying to get at is once this actually gets reimbursed, there's no need for additional funding? Or is there a need for additional funding based on just COVID-related issues?
Um, the funding we're receiving, we have actually spent to that number. So we knew that was our budgeted allotment of resources and we have built our programs for reimbursement against that number. So unless that $256,000 gets increased, we won't be making any additional requests.
Okay. Perfect. City, what do we do?
Ma'am?
Was it legal?
It's all right. I was prepared.
Okay, any other questions regarding item 13 and COVID-19? Hearing none, it's time for motion.
I make a motion to continue the resolution.
A motion to continue the resolution is a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? And abstaining? The motion carries four votes to one with no extensions. That's not moving to the negative. All right, we have item 14, considering taking action necessary regarding re-appointments or appointments described on the library board, having three open each for a two-year term and one vacant unexpired term.
You want to re-add the names?
I'm simply now that I've looked up on my head, I'm trying to look for that one.
Well, Denver has the unexpired term and then the other three.
I think the recommendation would be to appoint Sarah Marcias, Emily Kendrick, and Angela Peña to the two-year terms and Diane, oh, I'm sorry, and Diane Windsor to the unexpired term.
I make a motion to approve the library board as Mr. Gold just announced it.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Sarah Marcias, including Emily Kendrick, and, and Jonathan Peña to two-year terms, and Diana Windsor to one-year term. Motion and a second has been made. Any further discussion on the library board appointments? Hearing none, it's time to vote. All in favor of those appointments, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? That motion carries unanimously. Any of those persons are listening to this, even now, are ready to make? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Library is a critical part of our city and entire community and we are much better off having that organization and facility and resource available to us. Item 15 is the city manager report, this is the bonus.
Happy New Year. I hope everybody had a good holiday and time with their family. The past month, we've seen a number of employees impacted by illness in our city. Our chief financial officer was in the hospital for a week and we're happy to stand back here tonight. We've seen our CDC director out with ill... We've seen our CDC director out with illness. We've seen our library director out with illness. We've seen our public works director out with illness. So we've been hard hit, but we have sustained operations through it all. Operating High Points, Rizlin anticipates construction of model homes in late January or early February. With Metroway Point One lots now ready to begin construction, we can anticipate home building to get underway shortly after those models come out of the ground. Sales tax revenue continues to climb this past month. We saw a 63% increase in sales tax revenues due primarily to online shopping. United Ag and Turf is nearing completion and anticipates opening their business the end of March. The downtown central social district park planning continues with Pacheco Coke and Kiazza Construction working on value engineering to keep the project within budget. We met last Friday and we're very close to our budgeted number right now. The targeted start date in March continues and we anticipate being complete by November of 2021. Thompson Farms Development, located northwest corner of FM 121 and Jim Jones Roads plans on starting construction of model homes in February. City anticipates Pulte Homes will start construction of their model homes within the Oakbrook Development in March. The elevated storage tank to be constructed on highway or just off Highway 75 and 121 near the site of well number five is now before the Texas Department Water Board for approval on their February agenda. And the city is preparing submissions to Tech dot for grant consideration for the third leg of the shared use path. Two potential projects have been identified for the transportation alternative set aside program. We'll make that final determination and submit it for a 2022 project approval. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Or other city staff members? Here we now, it's time for review and council closing comments. Am I right with Mr. Neil?
Ah, thank you.
Welcome very much. If I ever see you joining us at the table, appreciate your willingness to serve. Lee?
You ready to write off?
One person?
It can be?
Uh, and
Not calling anyone.
Well, yeah. Do anybody want anybody to watch them, we're on a discussion.
And continue it.
Yeah, I really can't tell what you're saying.
Do you have anything for, um, closing comments?
Okay, um, I thought Wayne or Lee was still talking, but, uh, I just wanted to say I'm glad Robert's doing better and hopefully everyone is. Hopefully this thing's going to turn around and everybody gets healthy. It's been long enough.
Very good. I call Wayne's comments. Happy New Year to everyone who's here tonight and throughout our community. We hope to do, uh, be more, see more people in our meetings as we're able to open up city hall during meeting times. If the vaccine gets out there, we can hit this COVID epidemic car. My only comments for right now, and we are at item 17, adjourned. If anyone would like to make that motion?
Motion.
And a motion to adjourn, I suppose, second?
Second.
And a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
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 We stand adjourned until next month. Thank you all very much.